That's called Jackie. He plays five. He plays five.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started with the July 6th City Council meeting. City of Brandon, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. Christina, can you call the roll?
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parsons, Mayor Lumber.
Here. First item of business is approve the agenda. Motion?
Motion, second.
Motion to second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? additions, deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have three sets of minutes. June 11th briefing meeting, June 15th regular meeting, and June 18th canvassing of the election results. I can have a motion to approve those three sets of minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bills and claims were submitted with the agenda. Any questions or first, I guess, should I have a motion?
Go move.
Motion and a second to approve the bills and claims submitted with the agenda. Any questions? I did have one, Christina. Sioux Valley Energy, 41,000 improvements.
That's for the core area reconstruction for Phase One.
Okay, part of the project.
Part of the project for adding and adding some lights and moving some around.
Streetlights?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Total of $1,1031.91. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One item of old business for before new members member takes the oath of office is the second reading of ordinance 611, amendment of chapter 52-7, permitted open burning laws. Have a motion to approve the second reading?
Second.
Motion to second to approve the second reading of ordinance 611. Questions, comments? Brian, anything?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I adjourn here and?
Yep. Let's adjourn.
I would allow you to even second it, too.
Can we have discussion?
There's been a motion by Parsons to adjourn and a second by Clark. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Chuck Parsons for serving on our council.
Yes.
Dillaz LA, we appreciate all your service. Jack, I'll ask you to come up and take a spot. And then we have Vicky David and Tim Jorgensen also being sworn in as new members.
Christina gave me the okay that I could swear in all three of you guys at the same time.
Get closer.
Yeah, get closer. So I will do that, all three of you guys. Do you, Tim Jorgensen, Vicky David, and Jack Carment, having been elected to the office of Alderman in your respective wards, to the City of Brandon solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and all local ordinance of the City of Brandon, faithfully and partially to the best of your ability, perform all duties of the said office of Alderman.
Agreed.
Thank you very much and congratulations.
Oh, is Chuck still here?
Yeah.
There's no password.
So. Well, this is mine to use.
This is.
Wow, about that.
Chuck corrupted on the way out.
Well, we wiped clean, that's all.
Yeah, all the fingerprints are found.
There you go. When you speak, you just hit the blue button there. All right, here we go. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Vicky, Tim, and Jack. Welcome aboard, Jack. We look forward to working with you in your new election to the City Council.
Glad to be here.
With that, I'll call the meeting into order and we'll approve the rest of the agenda.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Time for our public comments. Anybody from the community that would like to address the board may do so at this time. Hearing none, we'll go right into our regular agenda. There's a public hearing on two on off sale malt beverage licenses. First one from South Dakota Farm Wine License for A Homestead Brewery at McCarty Park on July 17th and 18th. Any questions, comments?
We did not receive any.
The second is from Severance Beer LLC at McCarty Park in the same timeframe. Is that McCarty Market?
Correct.
Any concerns from the council?
Do we collect certificates of insurance from these vendors?
We can.
Can.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion to approve both of them if you would.
Go move.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the on off sale malt beverage licenses for A Homestead Brew and Severance Beer LLC at McCarty Park on July 17th and 18th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very good, thank you. We have the election of our council president, Barb Fish, and our council vice president, Dana Clark. I can have a motion to approve those two.
Go move.
Motion to second to approve President Barb Fish and Vice President Dana Clark. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our committee reports, the golf course, we have a design build flood repair project quotes or RFPs.
Yeah, we received two proposals, one from Landscapes Unlimited and one from Dunick. We got a draft contract or two contracts from Landscapes today that we're currently reviewing, so we don't have anything to present to you tonight, other than if the council would authorize us to enter into negotiations with Landscapes Unlimited for repairs at the golf course from flooding from last year. And then we'll bring it, once the contract's finalized, we'll get that to you for your approval.
Council prepared to proceed with Landscapes Unlimited?
Any motion?
I would.
Motion to the?
Second.
Motion to second to approve with the RP with Landscapes Unlimited contract to be approved at a later date for the golf course flood repair projects. Any further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have four bids on our pool improvements project. Brian or Tammy want to review those?
Yep, the pool improvements project was bid out on the 16th with four contractors and the lowest bid was Beck and Hofer at just over 1.3 million. So it's still under the 1.6 budget amount.
And we were able to get all the alternates on it, too?
Yes, yep, that was the base bid plus all the alternates.
So park board makes a recommendation to accept this bid from Beck and Hofer for the pool improvement, so I make a motion for that, Mayor.
Very good. The amount of 1,341,100, low bid. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second to approve the low bid from Beck and Hofer Construction for the pool improvement projects, which includes all alternates. Any questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, under Parks Department, we have a request to utilize Tall Grass Park for graduation ceremony from Jason Kenstead. Includes a food truck, is that?
Correct, includes a food truck.
The reason for council approval?
Go move, second.
Motion to second to approve the use of Tall Grass Park for graduation ceremony as presented by Jason Kenstead. I did not have the date written down, July 19th or something?
18th.
18th. Sorry about that. Any questions from council?
I would just encourage us to get a certificate holder from the food vendor as well on this one.
Any others? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public safety, we have our inspection report as presented by Paul Clark. We have a wage adjustment for police officer Dan Francis to $20.90 an hour. If I can have a motion to approve that?
Go move, second.
Motion to second to approve the wage adjustment for police officer Dan Francis at $20.90 an hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C3, we have a review of chapter 13-2, noxious weeds ordinance, or whatever you guys call it. Vicky?
Um, am I able to call people up to speak about it?
Sure.
The reason why is this is when I first got appointed last year, I had Jean and Jerry Gurkin reach out to me with a continual problem. And so since last summer and even the summer going and reviewing and looking at their home and what they're having to deal with, so I will just invite them if they would, just to kind of come up and give us your experience and share your story, so to speak, if you would.
Jean Gurkin. Just press the button. And we live at 3A Wait North Needles Drive, have lived here since the early 60s, same house, we love Brandon, and we've not experienced until the last, well, three years, some really poor caring of yards, I'm going to say, whether it's mowing rubbish or whether beside us, we're kind of in the middle. The house beside us on the corner, we started talking with the city, kind of overlooked things, and it got to the point where in May of 2018, we had a large area of of noxious weeds, thistles. And I'm just going to pass this, if you just pass this around so you can see why, what we call a large, it was humongous. And that's when we started talking to Brian and to Paul Clark. We asked him to come out, we gave him the opportunity to come on our lot at any time, go to the backyard, because when you drive by, you really can't see what we're experiencing when we go to our backyard. You can see somewhat to the south of us as to the tall weeds and the noxious weeds and so forth, but until you go further behind our house, you can't. The other side of us now, this last few years, have gotten worse, and being a former teacher for 30 years, it's kind of like a classroom, sometimes when you let things slide, they kind of mushrooms, and I think that's probably what is taking place. And that one is really bad, too, as well. I'm going to show you, and these are dated, this was in 18, is when we started, and again, I have listed here, I went through my notes, I've got a pile of this high in the last three years of different times that I've called and we've stopped down and talked with Brian and Paul Clark about this. It doesn't, I don't know what is happening here. You have an ordinance, and I'm not sure whether it's the ordinance that needs to be reviewed and updated and changed, added, whatever, or if it's the enforcement of it, if that can be looked at to see what has been done, because it seems to, when we talk with Brian, things are going to get done, and yet they're not, and so I don't know what the holdup is. And we're very frustrated. We just don't know what to do. The house on the corner beside us had an owner and they left, and it's been people in and out a lot. And so maybe that's, but as to the ordinance, I guess that's what we look at, for help from the city to help us try to get the yards cleaned up and have them mowed all the time. These are in 19, and these are just a few. I didn't, I've got a lot more here. 19 and then 20, and then I've got what it looks like today. And I understand that some letters were sent today, or I should say recently, and you can see on todays that nothing has been done here. This is the other property beside us, and you can see the weeds, the growth there. We just urge you, if there's at all anything possible, and we're probably not the only ones that have this problem, but you don't like to, you don't like to complain, you try to, and we talk with our neighbors, we're not, we're not fighting neighbors, I guess, put it that way, but we just can't seem to get through to them that they really need to take care of this. Are there any questions that you have that we could answer? I would invite each of you to come and walk in our backyard and see it. I really, truly don't feel that you would want to live beside something like this. The noxious weeds especially, we have our, a company come and spray, and they said, I mean, we paid $40 extra last year to have some kind of a spray that would stop some of that from coming into our lawn. Our lawn by no means is like a carpet, you know, but we just, it just would be nice to have not tires in the backyard and a whole lot of rubbish and stuff, and to have the grass mowed, I guess. If there's something that, I'm just thinking, when I was president of multi-housing association, we worked with the city of Sioux Falls for some of these landlords that just didn't understand that, you know, mowing is important and keeping rubbish off of your yard is important. And so if there's some type of a committee, I mean, if we can do anything to help out in this, but I really think the ordinance needs to be looked at. I don't know how long ago it has been looked enforced. Hartford, I know if the city goes out and mows, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but I think maybe once the city came out and mowed that corner a lot, because it was beautiful. It was like a dream.
How many times in the last two years?
I could tell that somebody else mowed it, but in Hartford, and maybe they've changed recently, but the first time the city mowed, it was a $250 fine. The second time they mowed, it was a $500 fine. I don't know. If we could do, we just have to do something to try to encourage people to care for the property. We've got a beautiful city, that's why we've never moved, we love being here, but I'm just, would encourage you, we're so frustrated, we don't know what to do.
Brian, where are you at right now with that? Because those pictures were dated July 6th, and I can tell from the picture, it's above six inches, so if we've given them warning, because I did drive by the house.
I think I talked to Paul Wednesday or Thursday, I went out and looked at it. It was Wednesday. I told him that the back needed to be trimmed some more, I think they'd mowed it, but they hadn't done any trimming.
They didn't mow it. No.
They never trim.
And then some other issues, but I mentioned to him at that point in time that we'd probably need to send them another notice, probably early this week, because the front yard was not quite at six inches yet, but with the rains that we've had, I was fairly confident it would get there.
Yeah, yeah, but that's just the front yard that you're driving by. The backyard is knee-high. I can walk along the fence and this, it's this high. They never mow along the fence, they don't put, pick up their tires, there's four tires laying out there, there's junk laying all over, and there's dogs all over the place, and nobody, nobody does anything. David was out there, he knows the place. You remember?
I drove by today, too.
The pit bull? Remember when I came to see about the pit bull? You took care of that situation.
But the problem is, is when you drive by, you can't see what we get to look at when we go in our backyard. And that's, that's why we have invited for the last three years for the city to come in and walk back there and just look.
Well, we should not be doing drive-bys. I mean, we're council members, we can do a drive-by, our employees have to get out of the truck and look at it, and I'm sure, I hope they are.
They're not. Paul is not.
They're not going to the back.
Paul is not.
There's a wood fence around it, and they look at that, and that's it.
They will be now. Right, Brian?
Yep, I've told him, I've told him to go on Gurkin's property and look in the backyard, so I will make sure that he does that.
So maybe that's, you know, something, the enforcement part of it, it needs to be looked at a little bit closer, and that's something that you people will have to discuss. But we're really, it's really sad, and I don't know if there's other places in town like this, too, and people don't like to complain, and we don't like, we waited all this time. That person bought it in 2010, and she was there for a while, and then she moved, but, and then that's when the problem started with all of the stuff and the weeds and that. But, yeah.
You let somebody live there free, and they don't take care of anything. She left town, and I don't know who's living there.
Any, anything that we can, any more information we can give?
Yeah, I have a question. I drove by there last Thursday evening, and I didn't walk in on your yard, but I could, I could get a glimpse of what was going on back there, but one of my biggest concerns was the garbage out in front. Has that been collected yet?
Yes, it's been that way for three years. They had a dumpster last year and the year before, and it was sitting in front of their garage, and they kept, they had some wood and some things in there, but they threw their garbage, everyday garbage in it, and it got, it was overflowing, and we complained about that, but it sat there and sat there and sat there, I think, almost all summer, either last year or the year before. Stink, you know, the people across the street, and this is, you know, I can't speak for them, but there are neighbors that are upset. The person behind us said that, you know, they're driving, they're parking cars on their, on the, on the lawn now, and they don't like it, and I said, well, then you need to call and let the city know, and, well, they don't, they don't like to get involved in something like that, so it's really sad.
They did pick up the garbage.
Today.
The dumpster has been emptied and everything else?
Today, well, no, just the garbage, just the garbage can and all of the mini bags that were in front with it.
That was management did today.
Okay.
But there's still a lot of stuff, I guess, there, so.
So do you have concern about rodents? That's what I would be concerned about, and that's a, yeah.
And we shared that with the gentleman to the north of us, and he said, well, I don't, Jerry said, you know, you say, don't you have any problems with mice or rats? And he said, no, I don't. Well, then what did you tell him?
Probably because I put a whole bag of decon out in my storage shed every year.
But that's, yeah, that's a big issue, so. At any rate, I just don't like to see it mushrooming either, but thank you, I've kept enough of your time, so. If you can help us and the other citizens that may have this problem, I, we really appreciate it.
I was just going to first say, thank you for coming, and know how difficult it is to bring up a topic.
It is, yeah.
And I'm sure there's smell issues, too, I saw a dog, a dog, at least in one of those pictures, and you can't go out there and clean up after your dog and that kind of mess. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I would certainly be in favor of something that was step-rated for repeat offenders that was progressive, if they're not learning their lesson, I would be in favor of that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I answer your question?
To answer your question, Vicky, we looked at this not too long ago, I think our ordinances are fine.
It's just the enforcement and getting it. Is there any nuisance action? Typically, the process is somebody notifies Paul, Paul works with the homeowner, Paul will eventually get ahold of me, and I might then write them a letter, and we might start a nuisance action. The nice thing about the assessment with the noxious plant is we get to tax it, and you can get the money there as opposed to having to get a judgment against them and then having them pay it, so we have two abilities to enforce it, so.
Okay.
I think our ordinances are fine.
Okay.
It's just making sure we can do the enforcement of it with people calling and doing the shutouts.
Okay, yeah, I just want to thank again Jean and Jerry for taking the time and coming up here, I appreciate it, and I think that's mainly why I wanted to bring this forward, to see, get advice from council and administration if we need to change anything, or if it's, what if it's the ordinance, or if it's just the enforcement part of it, the protocol after the fact, so, and thank you very much, thanks.
Your question, we just put all of the amounts in by resolution for the ordinance violation, so we do have the $250 set for the mowing fee. We don't have a graduated step. If it's something you guys want to do, you can have some discussion later, and we can change that resolution to have a step for first violation, second violation, but right now, we just have the one amount for a violation of 13-2.
So I'd ask the rest of the council if there's interest in doing that, would that need to be a separate agenda item at the next meeting?
Okay.
Good. Brian, if you would make sure that Paul keeps the homeowners that were here tonight in the loop on all the communication, that's just key. Letters, CCM, conversations, talk to them. talk to them. And because it is a process, I, I understand that. Nothing happens tomorrow. It's a process, but make sure that you keep them in the, in the loop. Item D2, we need to appoint Christina Smith as the ex-official member of the Brandon Community Foundation Board.
Yep. Don't forget to do D1, though, too, Mayor.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second to approve finance officer Christina Smith as the ex-official member of the Brandon Community Foundation Board. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D3 is to appoint city administrator Brian Reed as the ex-official member to the Brandon Chamber of Commerce. entertain a motion of that.
Okay.
Motion is second to approve Brian Reed as the ex-official member of the Chamber of Commerce. Any questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D4 is an update on the Corson Railroad crossing. Did Mr. Parsons stick around? I had him stick around just to, he, he is on the development board, and I know Tim is also on the development board, but I asked Chuck to stick around just to give us an update on that, what that whole process is going on. If you'd come to the podium and, and just kind of give us a brief synopsis of that, Chuck, I'd appreciate it. I know you've been involved with it a long time, as other people have, too.
There we go. Chuck Parsons, current chair of the Development Foundation. I'm gonna say dating back three, four years, Tim, the Development Foundation has struggled to get that crossing fixed. If any of you have been out to the industrial park, that's probably the number one complaint we receive. I would guess that the city receives complaints on it also. We, the Development Foundation, tried two or three years ago to do some patchwork fixing on it, and we couldn't get anybody to bid to do it. We, and we don't have the money to just outright fix it. We tried to partner with the county and the Corson Development Foundation and the Makita Group, and again, we couldn't find anybody. So I started having conversations with Tammy about what it would take if the city would take it over. And I think through those discussions, we've come to the conclusion that the city would stand a better chance if they just took over that whole stretch of road, because the township, is it Split Rock Township?
No, it's Brandon.
Brandon Township, sorry. They don't have the money to fix it either. So if the city would just take over that railroad crossing and that road, and then I think we'd have a, stand a better chance, and Tammy can speak to this, if we could get grants or partner with the state and/or partner with the county to get that thing fixed. Because with the Roe van Edition out there, again, we're bringing people out there all the time, and it's just, it's a nightmare to drive across. The big trucks, it doesn't matter, but it's everybody's cars and everybody that works out there. So that, from our perspective, that's what we're asking the city to consider doing. We weren't asking to annex in the whole Corson, you know, everybody that's living up there. We're not asking that. We're just asking to take over the road, so.
What is the process, says Brian, on taking over a road like that, or Lisa? I'd imagine that just doesn't happen. There's got to be something from Split Rock Township or whatever township you can say.
And, and Tammy and I met with Brandon Township, and they're totally fine if, if the city would consider taking it over. Again, they don't have any funds either.
I'm guessing we need a little bit more than, we're okay with it.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys over coffee, I'm guessing.
Right.
We're looking into whether it's a deed, a resolution. Today, I also discussed with Tammy and Brian, there's a statute that would allow us just to have an agreement to pay for that and not take it on. So there's some alternatives. We are trying to figure out who, how they got the land. We haven't been able to trace that back when this came in on Thursday to me.
I don't want to pay for it. I just want to make it easier for them to get a grant.
Um, so, yeah.
I want to make that clear, that I'm not stepping into this deal just so I can pay for the railroad crossing.
Um, there can be an agreement. There can be either a deed or a resolution, but we don't know which one. It just came in on Thursday night, and so I didn't have much time to look at it today, but I will take a look at it.
I would hope, and I may be speaking out of turn, but I would hope that, you know, when that interchange gets done out there, that maybe there's some way to tie it into that. Tammy, I don't know if there is, but...
With that interchange, there was some talk about putting that in there, just as it's a bigger project. But since that would be the only piece of the railroad, probably not. The state has made mention that they want us to take over that intersection so that they can fix the A.D.A. ramps and put in the sidewalks and that sort of thing. So there's some benefits there, too. The one thing about paying it is if we want to just do the agreement with the township and pay for the project, then we can do that by state statute. But if we want to apply for federal funding and get it replaced, then I think we have to own it. So that's kind of where it comes about.
Isn't that the intent of the administration, Brian, that to allow us to get better access to federal funds and the Development Foundation?
And we've tried with the state to get money from them, and it's flat, no.
Keep on in it. What, what, when they said no, on what basis? For the, is this for the repairs, Chuck?
Yes. It was, yeah. It was just a flat no. We don't have funds for stuff like that.
That was the state DOT.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the state GOED.
Yes, okay.
So fill me in, from, from the highway to the crossing, that section of road is owned by?
Brandon Township.
By the, by the township. That includes the crossing. But then west of the crossing itself, itself is owned by?
City.
City of Brandon.
Hamlock.
Well...
To where it's paved.
To where it's paved, right?
And that goes to the end.
Yeah, west of, west of the railroad tracks, we paved it. It is not our jurisdiction. We do not own it until you get past Geberro.
That's right.
Geberro is outside of the city limits, the big tanks.
Yep.
They're, they're outside the city limits. Our city limits are just west of them and Midwest railcar.
Okay, so a couple hundred feet or so west of the crossing itself, probably?
Oh, I'd say a couple hundred yards.
Oh, okay, okay.
But we, we paved the street.
Okay. So what you're asking to do is the city either take over ownership or maintenance of that road?
We maintain it west of the tracks now. We plow, we actually plow the whole thing in the winter.
But for, to apply for federal funds, that's, I'm not real sure if you have to be an owner. Lisa, that might be something you, you'll have to check into. If you can also have, or if you can have an agreement with the entity that owns it, that you would pay for any cost sharing of, of a grant?
It all comes back to who's going to be the sponsor. So like the township could be the sponsor if they own it, and they would have to apply for all the funds, but they don't have somebody to do all that paperwork and manage it for them.
Uh huh.
So I think they would come back and look to us to do that. So there are probably ways around it without taking it over. But if there's anything that was wrong with that road and something had to be repaired on it, I would think the city of Brandon would have to do it because the township can. So I just, it's what way do you want to go? Either way, whatever is easiest.
Well, if, if, if the, if the city can have an agreement with the township to maintain the road and, and do any improvements to it, if that's, if that suffices with the DOT, then I'd suggest that be the way to go. Otherwise, go, you'd have to most likely go through the full steps of taking over ownership, which is probably a more lengthy process. Otherwise, you could just do it with a couple agreements, I would think.
I don't think it's a lengthy process. I mean, there's some recordings that got to be done, but once you take on the road, you have the liability for the road, too. So if we, if we own the road, we have the liability for the road. As opposed to the township has the liability for the road. We can maintain it. We can put money into it. But once you own it, it's yours for liability purposes, too. So keep that in mind.
And as far as the Development Foundation goes, we just want to do whatever we can do to speed this process along so we can try to get the thing repaired. Because like I said, it's just a eyesore and embarrassment.
I, I get that part of it, too, Chuck. Having sat on the Development Foundation, it's been an elotros for them for a long time. But on the other side of this, this side of the coin, we got to make dog on sure that what we're doing is going to be right down the, down the road.
And we get that.
So I think we need the administration and legal to investigate this right now. Other comments from the council? Yay, nay?
Well, I was just wondering if, if the main holdup with the township applying for federal funds is the paperwork. Could we offer to help them with the paperwork?
Yes. It's pretty simple. It's just a couple pages. It's, it's real simple. It's a three-way document. Whoever owns the road, the DOT, and the railroad. Shouldn't be that difficult.
There would be a contact with the township and the state, and then the railroad with the state, and then us with the township. So kind of a weird triangle. It's just a lot of paperwork to do it that way.
It most likely would involve the DOT. Lance Berger, is that the guy you've talked to? Okay. To do a physical inspection. He hasn't been out ever, has he?
Has he been out there?
Yeah, okay.
Are there comments from the council? Obviously, we're not prepared to frame motions or anything like that. But I think administrative wise, your direction there to investigate more, have Lisa involved, and see where the best route for the city of Brandon and the Development Foundation to proceed on this, on this whole topic. Because we know both entities, they're tied together, and we need to work together and whatnot. But we also have to protect, this board has to protect the interests of the city of, of Brandon.
Tammy, Lisa, if you have any problems getting ahold of any of those people, just let me know, or if you want me to help facilitate. I know most of the, the players there, so.
Very good. That would help. Thank you. Thanks, Chuck, for sticking around. Item D5, we have a resignation from Mr. Paul Bosch from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Paul here tonight? No, he's not. First, I'd just like to thank Paul for his 17 years. I think Barb said that he was on the Planning and Zoning. That's a very respectable tour of duty on the city of Brandon Planning and Zoning Commission for 17 years. That's, that's combat pay. And thank him for his public service. You get a chance to see him, just publicly, on behalf of the council, thank him for that. I do need a motion to approve his resignation.
I would make that motion second.
Motion is second to approve the resignation of Paul Bosch from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Excuse me. Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item of business is to appoint somebody to replace Paul and the appointment of outgoing council member Chuck Parsons, who have, who has been on that Planning and Zoning Commission for a lot of years also. Is the recommendation to appoint him to the, to the commission? If I could have a motion for that?
Uh huh.
Motion is second to appoint Chuck Parsons to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Following that, we need the appointment of a council, city, Brandon City Council representative to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have chosen Tim Jorgensen to be our, our city council representative on that planning and zoning. If I could have a motion to approve his appointment?
Second.
Motion is second to approve Tim Jorgensen as the city council representative on the Planning and Zoning Commission. He will chair that committee in that role. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Tim. We need to recognize Andrew Batanzo as a administrative volunteer with the city of Brandon under the guidance of Tammy Jasma. If I got a motion to approve that?
Uh huh.
Second.
Motion is second to approve Andrew Batanzo, recognize, I should say, Andrew Batanzo as an administrative volunteer with the city of Brandon under the direction of Tammy Jasma. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D8, we have a request, a pedestal request from Midco. Brian, do you want to brief us as a council on that issue, the request? Just review it for us quickly?
There's a council agenda request from Midco's. It's in your packet on page 45. They are requesting permission to place pedestals in the right-of-way for their cable system. They laid out their, their reasoning's why in an attached memo.
I would ask, is there initially any questions from council, or if not, I would, I would ask that Midco representative come forward and speak to the request? Sorry, I forgot your name. I know it, but I forgot it.
That's okay. Pat Mastell. I am general counsel for Midco. What got us here today is confusion on our part and confusion on the city's part. When this ordinance was first proposed, we looked at it. We had our experts look at it. They said everything is not, does not have to be below ground. And so the first time that we heard that this, and nothing changed from draft one to draft two in that language. Nothing that affected this. So what happened is the first time we heard that everything was going to have to be buried was when you, Mr. Mayor, said, now, just before the vote, you said, now, everybody understands this has to be buried. And the city attorney said, yeah, I mean, they're all in agreement. And we just sat there going, what? Because we're 100% convinced that that's not what it says. And our experts are 100% convinced that's not what it says. So anyway, fast forward, what we did is we sent a letter. We thought, we talked about what we should do. We outlined why we disagreed with your interpretation of the ordinance. But we also, at the same time, thought the cleanest, quickest, easiest way for everybody would be, we would put in a waiver request. Because there is that provision in the ordinance. So we put in the waiver request. We outlined the reasoning why we wanted the waiver. We kept trying to get in contact with the city, trying to find out what's going to happen with our waiver request, and we weren't getting any responses. Well, now I see why. I mean, the city was over here and we're over here on our understanding. We did, representatives of Midco did talk to Alliance, and Alliance said their attorney was going to be writing a letter to the city saying they had to change this, because this just does not work. And for them, they thought it was for them only going forward, nothing existing. For Midco, as my understanding, Brian, told us that the, for them, it was grandfathered. For us, it's everything. I want to tell you, I brought the underground vault that you would want to require. It's sitting outside that door. It's huge. It is like this, like this, and about three feet deep that it has to be dug into the ground. It's huge. And that nice couple there talking about their yard, I can tell you, I can't speak for anybody else, but I sure wouldn't want that in my yard, because that's a big bear spot. Nothing grows on top of this. Nothing can grow on top of it. The other problem we outlined in our request for the waiver was these are a nightmare during the winter months or during any time when it's wet to do any maintenance. As you can imagine, anything in the ground is going to fill with water. They, they sell what's called a water-resistant vault, but there is no such thing. You put it in the ground, it's wet, it's going to fill with water. Think about having to do maintenance on that during the winter months. You're talking a steam machine to thaw out a big block of ice or a heating blanket that's going to sit there for two days with propane burners. I, I mean, that's the only way you could do it. Doesn't, doesn't, just doesn't make any sense. When we install those, I, I really urge you, it's right outside the door to look. You can tell, all that dirt has to be hauled out of the yard. You're going to have wheelbarrow after wheelbarrow, because there's at least two or three wheelbarrows full of dirt that have to come out. It's either going to be in somebody's backyard or in somebody's front yard. Nobody's going to like it. They really are not going to like this. So you got maintenance problems. If, if Alliance has to do it going forward, I can't imagine that they would be happy doing it either. You're going to have two of these ugly boxes sitting side by side, because we, they, it just physically, it wouldn't work to share. just physically, it wouldn't work to share. I already asked that question. And if it's in somebody's backyard, just think, most of the people have their gardens in their backyard. If there's a dedicated easement there, that's where it's gonna be, it's gonna be in your garden. Nobody wants that either. I mean, a, a small little pedestal is one thing, and we have those outside too, if you wanna see those. But I urge you to go outside and take a look at those.
Counsel, have any direct questions for Pat?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
So, what's the, and the pedestals, I'm assuming is what the, ones are about so high, maybe eight, ten inches?
Yep, there's, there's, some of it's buried, but it's, it's probably thirty inches, give or take, high.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yep.
So, just educate me a little bit, why, why can you put a, you know, that, that small pedestal above ground, but you need this huge vault underground?
Because you can't, you can't work underground on the, on the fiber that's there, you have to pull it out. So you have to have some wrapped, so you can pull it out.
Okay.
So you, you.
Otherwise, all the connections are up in the, in the pedestal.
Right, and that you can work on.
And is that, every yard gets one of those then, or how's that work?
Um, I, I'm looking back at my engineering, I, I can say that typically, there's like four houses, and there's one pedestal that covers two this way and two this way. So there would be, in Brandon, in the, the smaller pedestal, which is just feeding the houses, there'd be about a thousand of those.
So approximately two, maybe three per block, side of the street?
Probably.
Am I right or wrong on that?
It's every other lot with a smaller, and then the larger pedestal is called.
Sir, I'd ask you to come up to the mic.
Yeah, yeah, this is Steve Moore.
This is being recorded, so I can't hear you back there.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm Steve Moore, I'm the construction project manager for MIDCO on the project. So what's Pat alluding to, where we feed four houses, is a twelve-inch, it's, by the time it's in the ground, it's twelve inches high, by twelve inches wide, and it has the fiber tap in it. Our larger pedestal, which is one per block roughly, one every five hundred feet, that's our fiber distribution pedestal, and that's thirteen inches wide by thirty inches, or thirty inches this way, and then it probably sits about this high, thirty-two inches high. And the reason it has to be so big is that it houses a twelve-inch Tyco fiber case, where all the distribution fiber for that whole block is sliced out, and then fed down the line. So it feeds several other blocks, that fiber will feed about five, six blocks.
So, oh, and is, Alliance obviously, obviously has these same pedestals, I'm, I'm assuming, and, and, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming that your, your pedestals are very, very similar size and spacing?
The above-ground ones?
Correct, yeah. Cause I, I didn't, I wasn't here before, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me to, to read and review, so I, I'm literally in the dark.
And I will say, sir, that since you were kinda lecturing me on that topic, this whole thing was predicated from our administration receiving phone calls from residents of your guys threatening our residents with big, huge above-ground pedestals. The original ordinance did not have the underground pedestal in it, so I'll turn around and lecture you a little bit. Uh, it had, it was a change in the ordinance to put it underground because of that reaction from our residents, that were being upset, upset by your employees, threatening them with big pedestals in their front yard. Is that correct, Brian?
Right. Well, you know, I, I don't wanna lecture, but the fact is, if you have a lot that has a dedicated easement from the developer, and it's in the front, that's where they have to go. And, and that's why we asked for certain people for back easements.
I understand that, I'm just giving you some background.
Sure, yeah, and I understand, and I have, you know, I certainly didn't want to lecture.
So aesthetically, if you were to put in pedestals where there's an existing Alliance customer, does it go like side by side? I'm just trying to visualize aesthetically what this looks like.
It's, it's how it's engineered, I, I, to be honest with you, I live in Sioux Falls, and I have two pedestals side by side in the back. I'd rather have it that way than one here and one here, just like you get used to that one and you don't see it, cause it's just one group. But other people are different, so it's, it's, it's how it's engineered. I, I, I can't answer the question whether everyone is gonna be right where the Alliance pedestal is, or not.
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
Yeah, I have one more question, Brian. It was my understanding on the ordinance that, moving forward with Alliance, the current vendor in Brandon, that they would have to abide by the same regulation, the underground pit, or whatever you wanna call it?
Correct.
That was the intent of the original ordinance?
Correct.
It wasn't that they were gonna go back and change out all their existing above-ground pedestals?
No.
Okay, I just wanted that for my own.
All new, all new infrastructure would need to be below ground.
Right. Lisa?
I did have communication with both Alliance and MIDCO to answer the question earlier. The initial draft was to require everything to go underground, and we changed it so you could get permission from the city. We had discussions about, the technology allows for it, it's expensive, city staff wanted it buried, but we made the exception to say, the city can make the waiver, that's the way it was drafted. I disagree that there's the experts saying the interpretation is different, this is the way it was drafted. That was a discussion I had with both providers. So you, as a city, what we talked about is, they could get the waiver potentially from the administration, if the administration didn't wanna give it to them, that they could come to the city council, and if the city council give the waiver. So that's why it's before you right now, because the administration has not given the waiver for anything new.
I just have a, a question or a thought, because these boxes are quite large, and Alliance already has those in there, and I just think of all the yards, this town's getting, for good reason, I mean, the core improvements, but everything's kinda getting dug up. Is there a way we can let them do pedestals on what's existing, and then going forward, all future developments have an, in-ground ones? Like, or what?
They need to come to you and get a waiver to put anything new above ground. So you could allow the waiver now, and then, a year from now, a new development comes in, and you can have them underground. I think you're probably gonna hear the same things about the technology and the cost, and, and things like that, but they would have to come to you and request a waiver at that point, again.
Yeah, but to me, I feel like if it's a new construction, it'd be easier to put those big things in at that time than it is to come into a neighborhood and dig up yards and put those big.
But I don't think it's the cost of digging, I think it's the cost of maintaining and putting it in, if I understand, it's, because you're digging a box one way or the other.
It's, the difference in cost of the boxes is four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. The difference in labor is about six hundred thousand. So that's where the million dollars comes in. It's over a million dollars difference in cost.
Right there. Is there any, uh, motion on the part of the council to approve a waiver for the above-ground pedestal request?
Can you clarify again, so this waiver would, would go for how long, or cover what, exactly? I'm a little confused as far as what it covers.
It, it was our intent that it would cover where Alliance is above-ground, we'll be above-ground, anything new after that, like you said, the new developments would be underground, and we'd deal with that at that time.
So I guess my question is, we did not have this franchise agreement in place, and MIDCO came in and started digging. I, I'm just wondering as to the timing of that, sir? I mean, we're, we're being sort of chastised for changing things, we didn't even have anything in place, is my understanding. Am I correct on that?
You are correct, but the city only regulates cable TV. We are a certified utility in South Dakota. If we did internet only, all we'd do is be construction permits. So that's why we could come in. And we, and we were in, the majority of the construction, if not all of it, I think is just in the highway right-of-way. Am I right, Steve? Pretty close to that. We tried to limit.
Major streets.
Major streets, I mean.
Major arterials, all, all, just our trunk fiber is all that's been placed.
We don't have a lot of highways in town.
Well, yeah, just the one, but, yeah.
Although you could say that the road going by my house sometimes is a highway, but.
Yeah, it's basically just split rock, highway, redwood.
Right. Major arteries.
And we purposely waited to do residential areas.
Is that the next step, then? Once you get the trunk lines in?
That would, yes, that would be the next step, and we're.
Is that all planned this summer as well?
It's all planned this summer. All planned to be directional bore, nothing plowed, so all the least destructive, shall we say.
Um, I guess I am in favor of the waiver. I feel like there's miscon, miscommunications, and I understand that, but I feel like for our residents, although, you know, I'm an Alliance person, I, I love Alliance, but I feel like it's, it's also good to have options for our citizens and have them be available to that, so, and I just, I don't know, these big, huge boxes, I just, I just, I'm just seeing neighborhoods being really tore up to put those in underground, or if it would be easier just to do the pedestals, and just waiver just on what's existing now, and anything going forward. I guess that's my opinion.
Motion.
I guess that's a motion to approve the waiver? Is that, is that what I say?
To allow the pedestal.
To allow the pedestal.
Above-ground pedestal.
Okay.
Okay, motion is second to approve the waiver request from MIDCO to construct above-ground pedestal in their construction. Ongoing construction of cable and internet TV. Any further questions from the council?
Well then, what does that do with Alliance? Like, how, how do they, do they have to have a waiver then, too?
No, we're talking about, they don't need to apply for one.
For new construction. For new construction, right?
Correct.
That's not your.
If this goes for the new, for the existing, how about new? If, if new developments going in, what would then be the intent?
The new development, as I understand it, for Alliance and for MIDCO would be underground unless we came before the council again.
Lisa, I'd rather have that question directed to our attorney, rather than somebody else's attorney.
I think we need to have it just to. I think we need to have it for the existing utilities, so if there's already an existing one there, that's what it should be limited to, because we're not having an end in sight right now. You're just saying, grant a waiver for MIDCO, and then Alliance has to come in and do a waiver. I think what we're talking about right now is MIDCO's construction of their utility where the pedestals are already in place for Alliance. So that's the limitation, and then to the extent, anybody needs to put something in new, where there's not one existing, then they'd have to come in for a waiver. So you got a whole new development, there's nothing existing, they're gonna have to come in and ask for a waiver, if they're not gonna put it underground. Does that make sense? So it's the existing, where there are existing pedestals in place right now.
And typically, in new subdivisions, there are five-foot utility easements on the rear property line, for utilities for power, cable, telephone, et cetera. This is really only in the older parts of town, where a lot, or MIDCO does not have an easement in people's backyards. They've asked for them, not everybody is granting them. So in those areas where they do not have an easement, they want, they can put it in the street right-of-way. Alliance typically has those easements through backyards, so typically those pads are in the backyards in the older parts of town. If you drive around town, there are some locations where you do see phone pads in the boulevard, but not many.
So my question would be, why, why is administration more interested in having them below ground?
Well, first and foremost, it was the threat that MIDCO gave our residents, that if you do not sign this easement to allow us in your rear yard, we're gonna put big structures, big green boxes, in your front yard. That's what precipitated it.
Which is true though, right? Like, if they couldn't go in the back, they would have to go in the front, and they, legally, they could go in the front.
Correct, but what the citizens were describing to me was not these phone pads, not these little ten-by-ten, thirty-six-inch tall phone pads, but the big green, three-by-three, two-foot tall green boxes, is what was being described by MIDCO. And our residents were not happy about that. Number two, as we've talked about among staff, the more stuff we have in the right-of-way, the boulevard, that's where we plow snow. There is potential for damage to those phone pads in the right-of-way. I mean, we, we take out mailboxes every year, even though we try not to. So there is potential for damage to those phone pads in our right-of-way. But as you drive around town, you do not see a lot of phone pads in the boulevard. There are some, but not a lot. Cause Alliance, Sioux Valley Energy, Excel typically have easements, private easements in the rear yards of property owners.
From the educational side of things with the residents, is this being explained to the ones that are hesitating in the backyard? Do they know that their service could be disrupted from snowplow activity, for example?
We, we certainly try that. I, I, this isn't unique, we had this in Fargo quite a bit, the older part of town in Fargo had the same thing, that they were in the front, and try to avoid them, nobody likes them in the front, so. And I apologize if, certainly we didn't wanna convey any threats or anything else, and I apologize for that.
Brian, you said it's mostly in the older parts of town where the pedestals are in the front?
Correct. If you go into the newer, newer subdivisions.
Newer being what? How many years?
I'd say, the core part of town, Sylvan Circle, do not have utility easements in their rear yards. If you look at most of the other subdivisions, and, and I haven't driven around town, but most of the other subdivisions have those utility easements down the rear property lines of, of all the lots. That's just a standard procedure for us now. So it'd be, it'd be the core.
I'm looking at the Alliance guy, why in the heck did you put yours in the front yard of my house?
So the core.
Just a side note there.
Sylvan Circle, Richland Park, would probably be the ones that have the, that don't have the rear yard easements.
So like, what I call the Robert Bennis area, down by Robert Bennis, majority of those would be in the backyards?
Should be.
Except upon the park line, I think the park line.
Just, it doesn't, it doesn't mean a hail of beans, I'm just trying to get my bearings straight here.
On, on part view with, with buddying up against the state park, that may be different there. But typically, if it's, if it's platted so that the subdivision encompasses both lots, there's a five-foot setback on each, each lot.
Sure.
So I think in your case, the property to the best of you wasn't platted at the time.
Paul never wins. Uh, I do have a motion and a second on the table. Any other further questions from the council on the issue? The motion is for the existing utilities. Pads for the existing, is that the terminology we're using? Existing utilities?
Were the, the, were there already existing pedestals, correct? In place, yes. Without, are the motions.
Right, right.
If we can make that amendment, that's special.
And that is a correct motion, I'm looking to you for it, that solves what we're trying to get solved here?
If we get the amendment, yes.
What do I, I'm sorry, amend my motion to say, existing, waiver to approve existing pedestals where they're located. Right? Is that what I'm saying? Lisa?
Waiver to approve the, the.
Pedestal.
Above the ground pedestals where there are existing above-ground pedestals.
Okay, a waiver to approve the above-ground pedestals where there's existing above-ground pedestals. Right? All right.
You are right, Dan.
Second that.
Okay, now I've got a, I've got a question about the ones in the right-of-way. If they're placed in the right-of-way, how close are they to the street? And how well do they hold up to really heavy, slushy snow getting thrown up against them?
Uh, we try to put our facilities in the back part of the right-of-way, but depending on where Alliance is, gas and power, most, I'd say ninety percent of our pedestals are gonna be in the back right-of-way, and we're gonna, we may be boring at the edge of the sidewalk, but then we'll have like a ten-foot lateral, and place our pedestal on the back of the right-of-way.
So they're gonna be removed from the street?
Yeah, it's far back.
A distance.
Yeah, so if. Yeah, so if it's got a, if you have an 80-foot street right-of-way 40 feet from center line, our pedestal will probably be at 39. You know, in the back of the pit, at 40, front of the pit, maybe at 39. As long as there's not an existing utility there, we can't set it, but normally, we can get it back in there.
Okay. And the option, the first option's gonna be to put it in the, in the back?
In the back, yeah.
If you can get the easements.
Yep.
But just to be clear, if there's sidewalks, sidewalks are placed one foot from the property line, so most of the time, they're in between the sidewalk and the street curb?
So, more or less, it'd be right up against the sidewalk, as much as possible.
Yep.
Do we have any ballpark of how many this is gonna, gonna end up being? I mean, is there a number of?
Yeah, 1,600. 1,600 total. About 630 of the 12 by 12, and then close, or, excuse me, 1,000 of the 12 by 12, 630 of the 14 by 13 by 30, the bigger pedestals.
Any ballpark of how many of those are gonna have to be out in the Boulevard?
I would say probably 70% of our larger pedestals, because we have to have access with our fiber splicer, which is a trailer, are out in the street right-of-way. There'll probably be one in the middle of the block, depending on how many houses are in that block. You know how tight the yards are, but most of them are out in the street right-of-way.
I am going to ask the Alliance general manager to speak to any issues that he may have or concerns with the whole conversation, since you've been here forever, not you, but Alliance has been the original contractor in this deal.
Actually, I looked in the document in this folder, and it's almost as old as I am, so I have not been here forever. These have. First of all...
What's your name again?
Ross Petrick, general manager of Alliance. First of all, you know, kudos for taking this on. You know, like I said, it's been 40 years since the ordinance has been, been updated, so appreciate all the work. It's not easy, and you don't wanna do one of these every year. I question, one is what we're waiving for that, for that matter, is there is no agreement right now with Midco. So, I question that in itself. I do agree with them that these are harder to put in. I also, as a homeowner, would like to mow over them rather than trim around them, you know. My take on it is, is if it really is an issue, Alliance doesn't have a problem with going forward. Obviously, we'd have a huge issue if we had to, you know, up, dig up all of our existing peds and put in, and put in ground peds. It would cause outages all over the town, and we don't want that to happen. If it is an issue, my suggestion would be is anything in the Boulevard, maybe is below, anything in the back is out, is up. That's one suggestion as well. But going forward, we don't have a problem with this. We know it will cost more, but we also know that aesthetically, below ground looks, looks a little bit better than above ground, so.
If I could ask you, Ross, to share, we, I talked to Ross today on the phone, like, what is the additional cost to Alliance on these ones that you would have to bury?
Yeah, you know, for, as far as a city block, and, and, you know, I don't really have, you know, however many peds. Typically, maybe three to four peds a block, and we're probably looking at maybe $1,000, $1,500 more a block, a city block, to put these, these types of things in. But again, you know, fortunate for us, you know, we're already in most of the places. So, we don't have the additional expense like that.
How about the equipment, like the pedestal versus the vault?
Yeah, that is the equipment. As far as the labor, I don't know, kind of depends on where it goes. You know, as far as what we put in, we put in 20K rated vaults. So, you could, you know, run a tractor over them and, pound, you could run a tractor over them and they wouldn't break. So, whether you actually use those types of vaults or use a little bit, you know, less-rated vaults, you know, that would be up to whoever's, you know, putting them in, so. But my, my point is, is I'm not sure what we're waiving here, and I'm sure what Midco's trying to do is, they're trying to get their plans set for the summer, and when the franchise agreement is finally in place, they don't wanna be violating it. I get that. But to me, I think maybe the paperwork's a little bit behind the dirtwork, and that's kinda where I stand.
Can Lisa clarify? I mean, are we able to make a motion for a waiver when there's not a franchise agreement?
The ordinance is not even in effect, quite frankly, because it hasn't been published yet. I mean, it's unpublished, but we gotta wait till, it's not effective till the 15th. They were burying everything and with city staff permission, not getting construction permits, so staff authorized Midco to be out there. But we don't have a franchise agreement. The ordinance applies to the franchise agreement, so in a point of order, we're really waiving something once it's in effect.
The other thing is, as far as, in my opinion, it's really hard to say an exception for this, an exception for that. I would hate to, you know, bug the city for every single little thing that we do within the city as far as, okay, we're gonna go here now, you okay if we do this, and if we go here now, we're approve plans and things like that. That's not necessarily, you know, it's, it's not, it's not conducive to, to fast, expedient service, and that's, I don't wanna bother you. Midco doesn't wanna bother you, I'm sure. So, it would, it would be nice if we are gonna talk about a waiver process, which I'm intrigued by, is we would talk about, is it on a per-project basis? Is it on a per, you know, you have the waiver for this year for any construction? Or is it on a per, you know, yes, in the right-of-way, no, in the, in the easements, things of that sort, so.
We have some forms that we've been working on for the new franchise ordinance, but it's not in effect yet, so we have like an application. We have some forms we've been working on, so we will have some forms for what we're talking about, so that city staff can spend some time in looking at this when there becomes a request to have. So, it doesn't have to come before you for every single one of these, but we just, we're not there yet. Right now, we don't have an ordinance that requires the pedestals to be buried. As of 15th, we will have one, but that's not an ordinance in effect right now. So, I think Midco's coming in, anticipating the ordinance is gonna go into effect and asking for the waiver, so you can have this be in effect for them.
Sure, come on back up. I'm trying to figure out how the heck I get out of this mess that I've created.
Just a quick point of clarification. We understand the ordinance isn't in effect yet. What we wanted to do is get the waiver and have the waiver included with the franchise document when it came. We thought, rather, that combine everything into one would be easier, cleaner. That's why we did it this way. But we know that the ordinance...
Because you can't go into the residential until that's complete, right?
There's a question of whether a certified utility can go into, if we were not offering cable TV, yes, we could.
Oh.
But we chose, we're offering cable TV too, so we came before the city, we wanted to come before the city.
Okay.
So, yes.
Would it maybe make sense to revise after we get through this and the franchise and the ordinance and, and the formal request here? I mean, should we be tweaking the ordinance for what our expectations are moving forward, rather than having all of these requests? To Ross's point, have, I mean, it, it could get pretty cumbersome. Maybe we want to revise the ordinance to buried in the front and pedestals in the back or whatever, rather than all of these requests for waivers?
I would agree.
Something we can look at, but I'd also say I think we'll be able to generate that with the form that is created based upon this. But we can look at revising the ordinance too if we need to. I think we can deal with that administratively.
I think what I'm gonna do is, is call the, the question that we have before us and have it included with their request for, you know, it's gonna be, although that application is not there, it'll be implied that, that, when the application is there, that this request that we're either gonna approve or deny tonight will be included with that. You understand?
Yeah.
Counsel, all right with that?
Mm-hmm.
Further questions from counsel? Other outside entities? If not, Christine, I'm gonna have you call the roll on the issue.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Hello.
Jorgensen?
Mayor?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Four to two, mayor.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you. I hope I got myself worked out of that mess that I got myself into.
What happened, though?
I'm tired. Thank you for working through that, everyone. Very complicated issue.
Mayor, can we go back to D1?
Yes.
Go back to what?
D1. I think we missed that one.
The tax increment?
Oh, that's the best one of the entire agenda, and I blew it off. D1 is the resolution 16-20 that dissolved the tax increment district number three, the Marmon. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second to dissolve tax increment district number three, Marmon District. Any questions? Thank you, Barb. I completely blew it off. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very good. Next, we have a wage adjustment for Brad Top to $26.34 an hour. Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the wage adjustment for Brad Top to $26.34. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the request for purchase of additional equipment for the street and maintenance department, an asphalt saw for $1,819, a plate packer and light tower combined for a total of $9,174, total equipment purchase of $10,993. In addition, a trench box too, Brian?
Correct.
For $6,719. These are all non-budgeted items that the council needs to approve, I assume. Correct, Brian?
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve those purchases?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second to approve the purchases I outlined. The funds are delineated by the administration of being in a reduction of expenses on other projects, so they should be able to cover those within the budget guidelines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Water and sewer, we have a change order number one, which will add $4,500 to the project. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the Aspen Forest Main change order number one for $4,500, additional dollars. Any questions from the council?
So, Tammy, what was that one for?
This was for some investig, some additional investigation. We originally told them where the water main was, and it wasn't correct, so they had to dig for it.
Additional questions?
Pitting the water main, very good, right? Correct.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the final pay app for that Aspen Forest Main project to Metro Construction for $5,000. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the final pay app in the amount of $5,000 to Metro Construction. Any questions?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F3, we have a change order number one on the water filter media replacement project, a deduct in the amount of $8,132.95. entertain a motion?
Aye.
Motion is second to approve the deduct change order number one on the water filter media replacement. As I termed earlier at the briefing meeting, it's kind of a cleaning lady change order.
Yeah.
Thank you for your efforts there. Any questions on the part of council? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have the final pay app number four for that project, water filter media project, in the amount of $1,110.45. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the final pay app to American General in the amount of All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any new business on the part of the council?
Could I ask, just real quick, for Chief to give us a, a update on how the new ordinance with fireworks went? That be okay?
That would be fine. Chief Ware?
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yes, we had extra officers on staff over the holiday season, canvassing, paying for overtime to have additional staff. Received a total of 10 complaints through Metro Communications. Of those 10 complaints resulted in some warnings, some unable to locate, but no citations. Don't really have any further update unless you want specific questions.
So, what kind of complaints were they?
Complaints of fireworks being after hours or on public property.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
I just have a couple things. This will be the last night that we plan to do Zoom, so after tonight, we will not offer that unless we get a request 24 hours in advance, so this will be the last night for that. We're just not set up great here, so go back to our normal schedule. Second thing is our water meter replacement. We are getting on the end of that, just so to keep, to let council know and the public know that final notices will be posted to doors that haven't scheduled a water meter this Thursday and Friday. If they have not scheduled a water meter replacement and gotten on the schedule by Monday, July 13th, we will start shutting off water. We have to do this, we have a contractor in town, we want the contractor to do all of them if possible, so unfortunately, that's the, the last route. I am gonna have Doris make some phone calls tomorrow. We currently have 60 that are not scheduled, so I'll have her kind of make some phone calls tomorrow.
Excuse me, say again, six zero?
Sixty, yep. So, it's pretty good. I mean, we had 678 total, so out of 60, for 60, it's not bad. But Doris will make some phone calls tomorrow to remind them, kind of get a, kind of a first warning before they get it posted to their door, and then they will get it posted to their door on Thursday and Friday. So, any questions on that?
Assuming they've had ample notice?
They have had ample notices, yep. They've had three notices in the mail. I've posted, I think, a couple times on Facebook, so they have had many notices.
Very good. Any other council issues? How were May's sales tax receipts, Christina?
Forgot to look this afternoon, but as of this morning, they didn't have June's monthly breakdown, so, yeah.
Okay.
I'll let you know tomorrow, mayor.
Thank you.
Yep.
Looks like we're at the end of our agenda. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Hold it, hold it, comment.
I'm not sure who this gets directed to, but every time I bow at the ball diamonds, I hear complaints about the roping that's down there, and it's actually creating more of a problem than helping on social distancing, especially on some of the close proximity diamonds. Anyone else run into that issue?
Yeah, I mean... Both my ki, oh, all three of my kids play ball, and so I know what you're talking about, because we don't have the bleachers there, so they kind of rope it off, but then it's kind of hard when you're trying to pass people, like, especially on, where we play T-ball and coach pitch, like H and G, I think it is. It's, it's, is it H and I? Yeah, it's very, like, narrow, so I see that, because then you're like, you don't want, you kind of have to brush up against people to walk by them. So, I see why they put them in place, but everyone's sitting chairs and, yeah.
Yeah, it seems like it's created more of an issue of people getting scrunched together in the non... in the non-roped-off areas as opposed to leaving it open. I get the idea of leaving the bleachers closed, but when you have a six-foot alley of where everyone is supposed to be sitting, it's definitely a problem.
Well, everybody's supposed to be sitting down the foul lines and out in the outfield. The roped-off areas, this is the proposal from baseball and softball that was approved. The roped-off areas from the dugouts to home plate are for the expansion of the dugouts so that the kids can social distance. The parents and fans are supposed to sit from the dugouts to the outfield and then around the outfield.
I would say that's definitely not the way it's being done, and there's no signage to that effect either for that matter, so.
I would suggest, Brian, that you get ahold of Devon and have him get in contact with the associations, that they can spread the word or whatever to get the proper communication the way it's supposed to be. Oh, you got the message then, huh? Get with the baseball and softball associations and have them spread the word with the teams. I did get a notice on that. It was some social media thing, and it was rather cutting, and I had no clue what they were talking about, so I kind of ignored it.
It's definitely a problem over there.
I just didn't have a clue what it was. But thank you. It's good that you brought that up. Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:30.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn the city council meeting at 7:30. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.